Hello, everyone. Good evening. We are beginning our study session this evening, which we're going to discuss and review our budget process, P11 budget planning. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Reed.
Thank you, President Swain. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with our budget planning team. We've taken a great deal of pride in our budget processes, and in particular during these curious times, I'm really proud of our budget team for being able to budget with so many uncertainties. So I'd like to turn the study session over to our Chief Financial Officer, Tracy Patterson, who will introduce the team and introduce the presentation for our study session this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. So, good evening, President Swain, Board Directors, and Superintendent Reed. This evening's presentation is on behalf of Board Parameter 11, Budget Planning: Consideration of Board Goal Policies to Utilize Best Practices for Budgetary Planning and Financial Reporting to Implement Data-Driven, Needs-Based Resource Allocation and to Also Involve All Appropriate Stakeholder Groups. The accompanying team presenting with me this evening is Dr. Joe Paperman, Chief Operations Officer, Mike Bailey, Director of Strategic Projects and Internal Audits, Jennifer Alec, the Director of Business Operations, and of course, with input from Superintendent Reed and Deputy Superintendent Harmon. So with that, the presentation will include the following information. Mike Bailey, would you please share our first presentation?
There we are.
All right. So if you could scroll down, please, to our agenda for this evening. There we go. So we're going to provide a PowerPoint presentation on the district's financial results and needs-based budgeting. I'm going to give an update on budget monitoring highlights that we've implemented this year. We're going to review the August and September budget status reports. I'm going to give a brief update on regional enrollment data. And then Joe can update on the 2021 capital projects reporting updates, if there's any changes or additions. And then Mike Bailey will be reviewing the GFOA budget documents, and then we will share the budget calendar with you this evening. Okay, so with this, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and he can talk about our fiscal sustainability.
Thanks, Tracy. I think one of the first things we want to do at the beginning of this conversation is set the context for much of the discussion. This is somebody called them uncertain times. I think we are all seeing a wide variety of effects of the COVID pandemic on our experiences here at the district. Last year, at this time, we talked about using our four-year forecast model to really guide us forward in our thinking around providing for a sustainable financial plan for the district. And that's obviously become even more important in these difficult times. So that's going to be where we're going to set that context and framework. It's going to be really important for us to think about this period of time that we're dealing with in the context of the larger frame. Not only has COVID-19 impacted the, you know, current school year in many ways, operationally, obviously, as well as educationally, but it's also sort of reset some of our thinking around the future years. And so those are some of the things we want to be thoughtful about. We, at this point, have watched whether or not the state legislature would call for a special session or not. They have not done so, as you know, as yet. Looks like that won't happen. But when they do come into session, the state certainly has some fiscal issues to contend with, and we want to be prepared for that as well. So as a result, one of the things we've been working to do is be very careful with our resources. And you'll see that as we walk through some of the financial information that Tracy talked about just a moment ago. And that includes finishing this past fiscal year with a larger fund balance than we anticipated, but setting ourselves up intentionally to be able to deal with the future coming years and challenges. So with respect to that context, again, we're going to start with this slide, and we'll see it again later. This is the four-year fiscal forecast. And so as we look at the 2021 year, we see that there's a disparity between revenues and expenditures. And then that disparity continues because in some, to some degree, we're being conservative. We're being very cautious about our fiscal affairs on a going-forward basis. And so we're forecasting that cautiousness. We're forecasting that conservatism. And I guess I would characterize this as kind of a, you know, a worst-case scenario. In other words, this is the kind of environment we want to plan for and be prepared to deal with should we find ourselves in this circumstance. Remember, in the four-year plan last year, we talked about, we really want to be thinking about that fourth year out. We want that to be our focus. So as we make current-year budget decisions, we want to have an understanding of what the implications those current decisions will have on future years. So again, this is really more of a context-setting sort of slide. We'll come back to this as we walk through some more of the financial results and financial planning and information as we go forward.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we have many questions already. But is that slide based on the assumption that the levy, that we have a continuing levy in 2022?
Yes, we'll talk about that. But yes, it presumes a continuing levy, yes.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to year-end highlights, the budget is in the lower set of bars, revenues in green and expenses in red. And while we collected less in revenues than we anticipated, we collected, we spent even less than that in expenses. And so we had a difference in revenue collections of 25.8 million, but a difference in expenditures of 37.9 million. So that delta between revenues and expenditures is actually improvement in the bottom liner and the fund balance. Remember, and this slide says with capacity, and we'll talk about that more in a little bit. But when we were building the budgets in recent, in the recent past here, and certainly through this coming year as well, we've built in the ability to grow the budget by up to $25 million, depending on grants and enrollment and other impacts that could affect the budget. So that's what we characterize as capacity. So these different numbers, the 25.8 million in revenues less than budgeted is assuming in that budget of a $25 million capacity, meaning that we actually came very close to our revenue estimate. And again, we were conservative. We were careful in our expenditures so that we could set resources aside for the future.
Well, and I'd like to, Mike's also shared that those expenses are yet to be expended, but they are committed, and that we do need to provide recovery services for students in many cases as we think about things we've not been able to provide, a number of our students that we do need to make up for. So it's really a timing of the expenditure rather than a quote-unquote "saving" or "banking" of the expenditure. So I appreciate that characterization, Michael.
And as I indicated, you're welcome. As I indicated earlier, our fund balance did grow in this past fiscal year that we just concluded to $48.5 million. You can see the different elements of fund balance in this chart. The previous year was in the $38 or so million range. But so we did improve fund balance year-end in 2020. And Tracy, I think you had a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, the gold color emphasizes the recognition of the 3% board policy to, you know, hold back in our undesigned committed category of funds. And so we're very careful and aware of that to make sure that we're protecting it.
And there was a question earlier, and I guess it's probably important to declare, I think we're very comfortable answering questions as we go through. So if somebody has a question, please don't hesitate.
So one, thank you for that. One quick clarifying question then. So, Dr. Reed, what you just mentioned about having, already making plans for recovery services for students, for, you know, the fact that it's a time scale. So based on the bar graph, Mike, that I think is just one slide back, so the saved expenditures?
Oh, this one?
Yeah, is that actually saved or just postponed? Well, I'll let Mike answer that.
Okay.
So I think it's a little bit of both. There are savings. And in some instances, there are some costs that weren't incurred as a result of being offsite. At the same time, there were costs that were deferred, as Superintendent Reed pointed out, as a result of being offsite. And as we find our way to providing those kinds of services that will need to be provided in order to catch up on those deferred expenses, and that will be reflected in this current-year budget. When we get to talking about this year's budget, you'll see that some of those costs that are related to, again, these unusual circumstances are what, part of what has complicated our financial position, providing for some of those additional elements that are required as a result of, you know, the uncertainty around being in the buildings, being hybrid or being out of the building. So I think the answer is some of both.
Okay. Yeah, as the year goes on, it'd be helpful to understand. First, you know what pops into my mind is the deferred rollout of a new K5 ELA curriculum, right? Which is, to me, is a different bucket than recovery services that were obligated by dictums outside our own district in order to fulfill, right? And so it's, yeah, but as we go, I think obviously those kind of differentiations will be helpful this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, good to know. Absolutely.
To ask a quick question, if I may, Mike or Tracy or Dr. Reed, we've got the fund balance policy here at 3% reserved. We've seen the budget last year deviate from what we expected. I expect we'll see that again this year because of COVID. Does anybody have any thoughts? Is that 3% the right amount of cushion, given what we're facing today?
I would like to say that I think it really depends on the board's comfort level and where you're at. I think it's very prudent to have a constant minimum fund balance policy that's maintained. And in my experience of working with other districts, I mean, that's been a focus. But really, I believe it depends on where your comfort level is as a board.
And so as a general rule within the government finance officer's best practice sort of construct, what we tend to look at is the stability of our resources and the predictability of our expenses. And I think those things suggest that, given the size of the district and how that results, you know, in terms of the outcome of what those 3% actually mean, and the answer, you know, short answer would be, yes. Especially again, as we look out into the future and we see kind of how does that interact then with the conservative future forecasts, so.
I think, you know, Director Cogan, you bring up a really good point. And I would think 3% is comfortable, but in times of great uncertainty, there could be a benefit in protecting a little more of that fund balance, and certainly a conversation we can have moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Reed.
And I think to that point, in my experience, what I've seen is policy boards recognizing uncertain times, the Great Recession of, you know, 8, 9, 10, somewhere in there comes to mind, and maybe adding a layer, right, that deals with these uncertain times. It isn't part of the fundamental core of the policy, but is responsive to the circumstances. So that's something the board may want to consider as you look at this in the future. So I think we're going to take a look back at some of those results that we've been alluding to here with the, with this. Oh, actually, I take that back. That was the results. We're going to talk about the upcoming budget, the budget for the fiscal year that the board just adopted. And of course, the budget work at the district is really grounded in the strategic plan. And one of the things that's really enamored me of the work here at the district is the desire of the leadership in the policy board to really activate the strategic plan through its resources. And so this whole notion of the fourth building block of, you know, this sort of ingrained connection between how we spend our money and what we think's important is kind of what I've really learned to appreciate about organizations that have these responsibilities and think about it this way. And so that very much is where we're coming from. The strategic plan element that calls for this budget process to be integrated into what we're about, who we are, what our goals are, is really what sort of invigorates, I guess, some of the budget planning. And in doing that, and this is a bit of a refresher, but as a way, again, to kind of ground set on these issues, we've looked into the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, work of this nature. And they've characterized this work as an Alliance for Excellence in School Budgeting Initiative. We've had several of the district leaders be able to participate, including Dr. Reed, most recently, in some of the training and conversations amongst the 60 or so districts across the country that are pursuing this work and help us learn from their experiences, but also learn from some of the other thought leaders around the country that are finding ways to really activate, again, the way they resource their work and have that step into and provide power into the strategic plan and into the goal around, you know, excellent student outcomes for every student. So therefore, we're continuing to pursue this. And as I said in the intro slide, it's like, is year three. However, year three hasn't, you know, year two and three hasn't really worked out how we had hoped, but come back to that. I think somebody alluded to that earlier. Again, as way-by-way background, the notion between, around the GFOA's work is not new or something out of the ordinary, you know, plan, do, check, and react. That sounds familiar, right? But in this context, it really adds a lot of context from district-type work into the sort of familiar paradigm. And there's a roadmap that involves lots of steps that really help us think our way forward into this connection between instructional excellence and, again, the way we spend our resources. So again, that's part of this context that we're working to aspire to. As I mentioned just a minute ago, additional staff leadership, and in fact, this last, this past year, we had two of the regional assistant superintendents and as well as Tracy Malloy able to attend the training with the GFOA. And again, I really appreciated that because there are such great thought leaders around the instructional side, and that's certainly not my strong suit. And so being able to have those conversations with those folks and kind of help them, you know, from their perspective, to think about, how can we do this better, has really been very helpful. And as I mentioned, Dr. Reed participated, or just, what, two weeks ago, I think it was, in some of the work that they're doing there as well. While we are in hiatus with in-person meetings and the Finance Advisory Committee is subject to that hiatus, we have continued to interact with them up to that point around this work and get some feedback from them. And they certainly are very supportive of this approach as well. We've gotten some good feedback. But fundamentally, they're very supportive of the approach we're taking. It's, you know, and again, we, in year two, going on three, we really intended to be much more inclusive in, across the district leadership, including building leaders and program leaders, department leaders, really getting their hands on this work and having, you know, deep conversations with them about how these connections should evidence themselves. But as somebody observed earlier, our hopes and plans were dashed as a result of the COVID-19. And instead of being able to have those rich conversations, the team that Tracy and Jenna lead really had to just find a make-it-work moment to get the budget even done in this environment. It was very challenging for them. They did great work. And I don't think I can overstate enough how important that was, that they, that they did what they did, because it was not easy. And so we got a budget accomplished, and you got a work product for you to consider, and you adopted a budget. It was not what we'd hoped to do, but it was still great work. And again, there to be commended. The, we did continue, at your request, to work on continuing to evolve the budget document that includes much more information about the district, its programs, its departments, the schools themselves, and things of that nature. And so we didn't pursue that and got that developed as well. Again, we had hoped to have that for you as part of your budget consideration back in June. And that is our, you'll see in an upcoming calendar, that's our aspiration for this upcoming year as well. So hopefully, all these circumstances will cooperate with us, and we'll be able to meet some of those objectives this time around. One of the things we are able to do is leverage the strategic action planning work that Tracy Malloy is doing. And so that's an important part of how we're approaching this as well. So I've already alluded to some of these things. We intended to have, and Tracy Patterson and I and Jenna had worked on developing some budget training and whatnot so that we could deeply involve department leadership, and we just weren't able to do that. But we also hoped to involve our community more so in giving them both visibility into what we're doing and how we're attempting to pursue the ideals of the district and the community through our work. And, but again, that's what, you know, virtually impossible to do, given the circumstances. As I said, as I alluded to this point, we'd hope to have you the benefit of the full GFOA budget document for your deliberation in evaluating the recommendations around the budget. Unable to do that, again, that's what inspired you this time around. But again, we continue to stay focused on resources and performance. Are we achieving those things that we're setting out to do? And are we allocating our resources in the right way, the best way, in order to be able to be as successful as we can be around that? And that's really kind of how we're thinking about the construct of the way we're preparing the information. So we continue to aspire to those goals that we had originally set out. And we really are pleased to see the growing ownership of this work by those in what the GFOA would call the instructional side, the regional assistant superintendents. Tracy Malloy is an enthusiastic partner. And it's great to be able to have these conversations with them. They've been, they've been great to work with. And again, really look forward to being able to do this in a more sort of traditional way, because I think it's going to have great outcomes. We are working on physician budgeting. That's one of the things that you'll hear more about in Parameter Number 12, because that's one of the work products we're working on in the accountability sense. And continuing to think about this notion of the academic return on investment. How do we, how do we think about that? And we've had several opportunities at Cabinet when a situation has come up to use this sort of construct to evaluate the options and come up with maybe a solution that does provide for the highest, you know, academic return on investment for our students in an equitable way. So those are some of the things we continue to aspire to. I alluded to this a minute ago, and I think it's really fundamental. And I think it's one of the opportunities that the North Shore School District has that's unique to some of the others that we have talked to in the GFOA's work. And that is the fact that the district not only adopted a robust strategic plan, but then that plan was activated through these strategic action plans in the buildings. And that work is excellent work in terms of a stepping stone into, okay, so then how does that inform the way we allocate resources? And as I mentioned, Tracy's been a great, Tracy Malloy's been a great partner. And now that the regional assistant superintendents are informed about the approaches and logic and the opportunities, that conversation's broadening beyond Tracy Malloy and ourselves and into those regional assistant superintendent kind of conversations. And then we want to continue to grow that into the non-instructional departments as well, human resources, IT, some of those others that, you know, this applies to them as well. While their goals are different than some of the goals for students in the buildings, still important to think about this work in the same way. They still have things that we want to be able to hold them accountable for, quite frankly, and make sure that they're adequately resourced in order to be able to accomplish those things. So we're working with Tracy Malloy. One of the things we hope to do is to expand this notion of strategic action plans into the departments so that, again, they just sort of take on the aspects of the district's strategic plan as it applies to them and think about it in a very similar way. And again, that creates a sort of common construct and approach for us as we think about the budget work to connect all the parts from a resource allocation standpoint, all within a construct of the strategic plan. So I think this really sets us up very well for, again, an approach that really does activate the district's strategic plan and in its, all of its operational sort of parts. To that point, Dr. Reed's invited me to participate in some conversations with Mutu as well as, and I observed your, or me, you had a few weeks ago with him as you're thinking about sort of the next iteration. And in being a little bit maybe more grassroots in terms of this aspect of it, as well as the other things that are already in play with our strategic plan as well.
Really, really quick, Mike, can I ask a question related to that? So as you know, that study session we had, we were talking about what measures, looking specifically at the measures under the goals, right? I mean, do you think it's feasible to apply kind of, you know, to use a phrase, a kind of an academic return on investment lens to some of the measures until, and not so much to say, okay, this one's better than the others, but this one, this measure might lend itself more to the academic ROI question versus this measure, probably, we probably can't quite use that lens the same.
Right.
Do you think that's a feasible and/or productive conversation? Or, I mean, because what you were saying just was really intriguing to me in terms of the overlap and the two projects.
Yeah, I absolutely do. I think that the answer differs depending on what the goal is and then what the measure about the goal is. So it'll be a different answer in terms of what lens to put on it, as you say. But I also think what it does is it gives you a multi-dimensional way to think about it, because you've got the aspects around academic excellence, and you've got the aspect around, you know, equity for every child and whatnot. And so unfortunately, and I always say this, I do a fair amount of training with policy boards. I always say this, your job is the hardest, because you have to decide where to place those resources in which of those sort of competing interests, because we only have so much money. You can't do everything. You can do anything you want. You just can't do everything. So which ones are those things you prioritize, one over the other? It's a really challenging situation, because you end up with a multi-dimensional model that says these goals can produce different outcomes. How do we decide which outcomes we want to, you know, prioritize, and that will evolve over time? But the short answer to your question is, yeah, I think it really does lend itself very well to us to creating ways to think about how we make certain investments, create the opportunity for certain kinds of results.
Great. Thanks so much.
Yeah, and the equity focus that I know was the, the aspect you all concentrated on, again, is, brings its own level of additional complexity to those conversations as well. So it's intriguing work, but not easy for sure. I like to refer to it as graduate-level work. Shifting now to the budget, though, that was adopted, there are some areas that we captured in the highlights of that budget document. You know, obviously, opening three schools. I characterized it here as three schools, but the expansion to the Sky Creek, you know, at the Clover Park Middle School and went out. So in addition to Ruby Bridges and the Innovation Lab High School, obviously, you know, major progress now being made on Concert Hall. We did achieve the K3 class-size goal that the state has established, which resulted in alleviating a financial penalty that the district was dealing with in prior years. Obviously, again, looking hopefully to recover from the COVID-19 impacts in a variety of ways. There are, there's a fair amount of money in this current fiscal year budget to deal with the fiscal impacts of COVID-19, such as with the protective, personal protective equipment and things of that nature as well. Continued to work on regionalizing the programs, especially the special programs. That work did proceed, make some progress this past year, and that's a precursor, of course, as you know, to the Start Times Challenge. So a lot of things were able to be accomplished in this budget, even given the So, so a lot of things were able to be accomplished in this budget, even given the challenges that we were dealing with. As I've continued to mention and will continue to mention, all of this with an eye on the future. We want to make sure we're careful about future years as well as the current year. It's nice to have a nice fund balance, but as you'll see, that fund balance can deplete quickly if we're not careful. And then data informed, working to continue to develop data that really supports the decision-making. Data won't tell you, won't make the decisions for you, but, but being able to use data in your discussions so that it helps inform the, the outcomes of those discussions is something we're really working to, to get to. And we talked about this last time as well. So as we think about kind of what is the construct for our budget? You know, obviously the strategic plan is, is the umbrella, all of this falls under. And, and then there are some things that need to be in place. And again, the building blocks in the strategic plan really get to some of these things like the ability to have a solid financial plan, a solid human resources plan, a solid IT plan, solid leadership, things of that sort, or the district resources that are the foundation. And, and then those support programs that they inform nutrition and transportation, things of that sort. Core instruction, you know, the bulk of the business, if you will. And in accommodating all the things that, that entails in our budget work. Special programs, there's a variety of, wide variety of special programs. Some mandated and some, you know, that are, are just because they're in our students' best interest. And then special programs that again are those that are in our students' best interest, the optional ones. And then we've got a variety of initiatives that the strategic plan causes us to focus in on. And so making sure we keep our eye on those as well as, this is kind of the way we think about the work. And, and kind of the way we're talking about it internally is amongst our leadership team. I promised we'd come back to this chart earlier and, and here we are. Again, with having said what I just said, the budget we just adopted is this 2021 fiscal year budget. And as I mentioned earlier, there are some costs in this budget that were, as Dr. Reed pointed out, some of those costs that got naturally pushed forward, but also some costs that are related to the pandemic. And then, and then just a growing element of costs because of the, you know, growing nature of the district. Costs tend to grow faster than revenues as a general rule. And, and so it's our challenge to balance these budgets on a going forward basis, knowing that. What we've done in the future years is we've anticipated a level enrollment. So that's part of that conservative approach that I mentioned earlier is we wanted to be able to have a plan that is predictable. And, and so having, you know, not counting on, if you will, enrollment growth in order to provide the resources that would keep us solvent is kind of that conservative nature of the approach as I mentioned before. And so, and so that's, that's built into here as well. And, and so those are all things we're keeping in front of us. In fact, here are the enrollment projections that are in that four-year plan. That is the plan that was submitted to the state on behalf of the district for in, I'm trying to think of the right word, conformance to the state's requirement for, for your planning. I think the state's requirement is fine, but I think the fact that we want to think that way ourselves anyway, just because that's a responsible thing to do for a large local government, you know, is, is probably even, you know, significant as well. I was going to say more important, I'm not sure it's more important than a state requirement, but it's certainly something we want to step into. As we look at that four-year plan, you can see the cost out, upays, resources. And so I just thought, maybe, maybe this is too busy. I've certainly been accused of that in the past, making slides too busy. But the rate of growth from one year to the next is what's being characterized here. And across the top, that's the rate of growth for the revenues for the district as a whole from one year to the next. And then within each segment here in this local government segment, which is primarily the levy, the rate of growth within each segment, one year over the next. And, and then this is the state resources, the blue is the state resources. Again, the rate of growth we anticipate from one year to the next. And again, given a flat enrollment forecast. As you recall, the state will fund increased costs at the implicit price deflator, the IPD. How our costs tend to not grow by the IPD, they tend to grow by either the consumer price index, the CPI or some other factor. And, and again, therein lies some of the dilemma in trying to provide for future costs with, with future resources, a rate of growth differs between the two. Here is the, the future costs. Again, these are as they were shared with the state in the four-year forecast. And you can see the rate of growth, you know, overall being higher than the rate of revenue growth. And again, keeping in mind that the 2021 budget that we're using as a starting point is, there's a differential between resources and, and costs in the 2021 budget to begin with as well.
Can I ask a question really quickly, Mike? So the, the, these expenses don't seem to be accelerating at the rates of the other chart that you've shown. I guess you, and I just want to make sure I understand really correctly. So the other chart you showed, what you said was the worst case scenario.
Yes.
In terms, so this is, this strategic expense outlook is basically the plan B?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just want to, so just want to make sure I got that. Thank you.
My pleasure. So again, some of the things we've mentioned as we've looked at these forecast numbers, the differences between costs such as the implicit price inflator and the consumer price index, personal protective equipment, Tracy, we end up with like $4 million or something and for this year.
I believe it was about 4.2 million.
Yeah, that's my recollection as well. Of course, we're, there continues to be some differential in the costs of providing all of our employees with the benefits under the new sub-benefit program. Great idea that more employees are eligible for those costs now, but some of that cost does fall to the district. And then of course, you're familiar with the limits on local enrichment levy funding, which began in 21. That creates a cap as well. And then again, our, our forecast projection that the enrollment will remain flat just as, just as kind of a conservative approach to think about this part of. So as we think about this upcoming budget, this calendar is actually the same we saw last time. And it illustrates our hope that by June, we would provide to the board a comprehensive budget document that you could utilize in your deliberation and thinking about how best to allocate these resources in, for the purpose of our students. And so this reflects again, that ideal, if you will, that we are back in, in, in having those discussions at a staff level in order to be able to develop, you know, a thoughtful, robust budget that, that enables you to have more of the materials we were hoping to be able to have provided this past year. And so we're sort of back to what we hope would be the upcoming calendar. Who knows what the pandemic will bring, but we'll be doing our best. And again, I just want to reemphasize one more time how significant it was that the staff, some of them relatively new staff, were able to pull the budget together in a way they did, given the circumstances. They did a great job, but this is what we hope to accomplish.
Um, Mike, I'm going to interrupt. So I'm, I'm doing some mental calendar math in my head. And I'm realizing the next time we look at P 11, we as a board will have already submitted to the county our EPNO levy ballot measure. And so I'm realizing we need to start having that conversation now. And is there a way that we can get a, a chart that shows us, you know, you had that great with the regular instruction and, and other instruction, for lack of a better word. But it was all necessary instruction. I mean, the, the new title makes it sound like the levy goes to extras, but there are very little extras in that expense chart. So is there a way we can get a bar graph that shows how much of the levy goes to necessary expenses?
Well, I think we're going to have a pretty robust discussion about that in a few minutes because you're exactly right. And, and at the same time, the state is asking us to be able to characterize the way the dollars fall, the enrichment dollars versus the state dollars. And so I don't want to steal Jenna and Tracy's thunder because that is certainly something that we have our eye on as well with the, both the upcoming legislative conversation. And I know you all will want to have as well as the local conversation about local support for schools and being really careful about how, you know, characterizing where the dollars come from and where they go.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Very important. And I think your other point is, is excellent as well. And that's something for us to think about, Dr. Reed, and that is the timing of these discussions with respect to providing notice for upcoming elections and that kind of thing.
Yeah, if I, if I remember, I, I think we have to have it to the county by December. And so, and Director Cast, I know you are, you are part of several of these that we really are starting that conversation next summer of what, what it may look like.
I think we start a little before that we find, we start finalizing it as a board in the summer. But I think the preliminary conversations definitely start early spring, from what I remember, from a, on a board level.
So this slide, this has got more detail to the plan to check act sort of a notion that GFOA brings to the conversation. And this is what we all laughingly, lovingly refer to as the placemat that talks about the GFOA approach to best practices in school budgeting. In fact, if you attend a training, which I'd be glad to host any of you at the training, you end up with a placemat that looks just like this. And with that, I think Tracy, we probably want to move to the budget monitoring, do you think?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mike. So I just wanted to update the board that we have initiated a few other monitoring procedures this year. And Mike alluded to one of them, but one of them we affectionately call the virtual roadshow. And then we also have enhanced position control reporting. So our, our budget virtual roadshows have begun. And Jenna Valick and staff, myself and Mike have been meeting with school adminis, with, have been meeting with budget managers just recently, and will soon be meeting with school administrators to review their 2021 budgets. And the idea behind this is to increase communications and understanding on existing budget resource allocations and uses. It's also meant to provide opportunities to build relationships as, as we have new staff joining the district and to recognize and question budget anomalies and to increase general understanding of budget monitoring functions and to ensure expenditures are in line with allocations. In addition, Mike joins us to be discussing the GFOA budget, school action plans, to ensure information provided in the GFOA budget document is up to date and accurate. So we've got that ongoing. I think we've probably completed at least maybe 10 to 15 of those meetings so far. So, so far, and I will ask Jenna if she can remark briefly on how things are going and what kind of questions she's being asked by staff or what kind of feedback you're getting, Jenna.
Yeah, I think it's been a really great addition to processes, especially being remote, just to make those connections with all the departments and to walk through their budget with them, making sure they understand the numbers that are there. If there's anything that they have questions about, they're able to ask us. We're giving that opportunity to them. Recently, we just sent out, in addition to the meetings, we're going to be sending out monthly reports to them automatically. So they can also respond and ask questions. Everyone seems to be really receptive about having these meetings. Most of them, we're going to be meeting with quarterly, some are going to be monthly, just to give the opportunity to connect and answer any questions.
Thank you, Jenna. And the business team has also partnered with the technology team and in order to develop a more robust position control system of reporting. The supplemental information that's included in the budget status reports does contain a staffing information as compared to budget. But that needs to run deeper to ensure that the staffing remains within, within our budget plan. And the idea is to create a tool which generates current staff FTE as compared to budget, but also makes it available and means to drill down into details such as salary account coding, FTE by program, names of staff, positions held by location, et cetera. And in my past, I found it to be an extremely useful tool and not only having budget managers and program managers understand and are aware of the staffing they're assigned to make sure that's accurate, but also to make sure we're within our budget plan. So I think those are two very powerful things that we're implementing this year. With that, I'd like to move on to talk about briefly our budget status reports for August and September. Mike, if you could pull August up for me, please. So as you know, we are required by RCW to be presented to the board budget status reports monthly. These are considered interim monthly financial reports and represents, the August report here represents what we have submitted to OSPI in our F196 annual report. So the format hasn't changed through August 31st as what you're accustomed to this past year. And as you know, the reports have been modified in the past few years to include supplementary information beyond the required budget status information such as interest earnings, prior comparative summative budget information by fund, graphics on general fund, historical fund balance comparisons, enrollment details, graphics and information on expenditures by program and object code. And then also types of expenditures captured by program. And we also have included some of the details and graphics by month on both expenditures associated with salaries and benefits and for supplies, materials and other costs. The supplemental information also includes capital projects fund by detail and year-to-date staffing information as compared to budget. So I believe as we look at this August report, and I think that you might've had an opportunity to review it already, but here we are with our chart of accounts as we scroll through. Mike, if you could scroll down. We have, we have, here's our investment earnings report. And then we have a chart that accompanies it. We have our budget status reports for prior comparison by all five major funds. Here's our fund balance chart for any fund balance. And then this is an enrollment detail report. And the next slide is an associated chart. We didn't really change the March FTE. We're using OSPI's March information as well because obviously we're, the school builders were closed. So that's where we've left it for this year. And then this is a summary expenditure by program. And what we try to do is analyze this every month and identify outliers or anomalies or changes from the prior year to try to, you know, explain those differences as we're going through the months. And here are salary and benefit expenditures. And a chart that's associated. And then other than compensation expenditures and associated chart. Again, we made footnotes. If you go, can you go back to that slide, please?
Sure.
Thank you. You noticed that the expenditure kind of spiked a little bit in August. And we, that was as a result of paying Cascadia Community College, which generally was paid in July, but didn't pay till August this year. So that's just an example of things that we try to illuminate for you so that you're understanding what's happening. And then we have the required general budget status reports for all five major funds. And we come to the capital projects fund detail report. And this is active projects that are going on in the current year. Joel will speak to this a bit later. Our debt service fund, transportation, and our ASB. And I realize the ASB fund is still higher than you'd like it to be, but I know, I promise you, we're working very hard with staff to get that reduced. So, and then finally, we have our staffing information. Are there any questions on August?
Okay.
Well, actually, just really quick, Tracy, if I could. So um, I had sent to Dr. She sent me back a question. Uh, answer about the capacity that was put into the revenue for federal special education funds. And so, because if you look on the August report, it looks like, I think it was about thirty thirty-three percent is all the revenue we have received from the feds for special ed. But, you know, it's interesting to me. So obviously. Things were different. The the capacity was there to receive revenue that we didn't necessarily receive. Um, but. I guess, you know, within the board role, my question is, you know, what can the board do to help with this? Is this something that's just um tied to grants? It's something outside the board's scope? Is this something because of the um? The all the ramifications of the pandemic, it was, you know, because we know that some things changed in DC. I mean, is there anything we can do to help with that? Or it's, it was more of, oh, we have capacity because things fluctuate every year and and it's, there's nothing we can do to pitch in on there.
I would say that for for the most part, we tried to build an additional capacity to make sure that we could accommodate any additional revenues that we would be receiving. And that we could avoid in sort of a budget extension experience later in the year.
Okay.
Um, specifically to special ed, I think I'd have to dive into your question further to provide an a complete answer for you at this time.
Well, and and that makes sense. Uh, perhaps during the budgeting process, the cost of special education services can vary so greatly. And we're a large district, you know, you get a couple of students that need a lot of intervention and you'll need a lot more. Um, the process kicks in more funds to come through necessarily. So that does make sense to me. It's just, I know that. Things have been, um, you know, again, Mike's graph with the red and the green, like anything the board can do to help bring in those dollars. You just let us know, we're happy to do it.
Okay, if we can move on to September. Again, same format. I've got a narrative that I provide. But I will say the format, you know, remains very similar to what has been presented throughout the nineteen twenty school year. With the exception of a few additional supplemental reports that I think um you might want to have more information on.
Is there a page you'd like for me to scroll to, Tracy?
Um, actually, I'd like you to um, I'd like you to go to page four to begin with. So we're going to go beyond the budget status reports. And so, and this slide here is where.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Jenna to just speak to, you can see where the revenue trend is a little steeper than last year. Um, and there's a reason why. And so Jenna, um, if you could please um talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So in September, there was an error by O S P I in their apportionment allocation. They um did an incorrect, put an incorrect input number for the grade four per pupil allocation. And so we received less revenues than we should have. They are correcting that and we will see an increase in our revenues in October to balance that out. The main thing. There are also some revenue accruals um that we did in September. The large ones were Safety Net. We didn't receive the actual cash until um October. And then also uh care's funds we received in October.
Know those funds are cruel, are revenue accruals that were um accounted for in the nineteen twenty budget. We cannot um double count our revenues, if you will, so we have to reverse them. So. Part of the accounting process that we generally do in September. Thank you, Jenna. Other than that, I would like, Mike, if you can go to page seven, please.
Um, Chief Officer Patterson, um, what you just said is really important is another aspect of the ending fund balance story. Uh, we were not able to double count certain monies. So even though it looked like it was higher at the end of the year, we hadn't actually. Um, received it somewhere subtracting it, right? Like, so I think all these pieces make up part of the story.
Correct. Mike, thank you, Superintendent Reed. Mike, if you could go back, um, I'd like to look at the enrollment, so not the F T enrollment, if you could scroll back a bit.
Back, okay, I'm sorry.
There you go. So what we've done is I, we learned that um you were interested in. Uh, having a headcount um historical comparison graphics, so the F T E graphic, so we've added this to the report. And so we've got in gray is going to be our twenty twenty one actual, and then our the green is going to be. The projected. So we'll be tracking this every month. Um, and it it does, it includes open doors or re-engagement programs and running start. So. Just want to make sure that we're providing you all of the data that you think is relevant and important. Page eight. This is one, um, let me go back to page eight. Okay, here we go. So this has been added and um this is a new report that really is. Uh, looking at the required some sub-fund reporting that the districts are required to do. This year and subject to audit. And so Jenna um has some very specific information, I think, that can help explain this and this report. Um, and the methodology behind it. And if there's something in addition or different you'd like us to do, um, you know, we're happy to do so. But Jenna, could you please? Explain to the board what the rationale is.
Sure. So. There are many ways that districts can interpret what the sub-fund expenditure should be. So our district may be different than other districts. Um, the overall methodology that we're using is that we are spending all of the state and federal funds first. And then our levy is covering the extra expenses. That's going to be reflected here. Um. Another method that we're using is saying that the the state is covering um base salaries. And benefits first, and once the state funds are used up, then again, the local funds will kick in. Um, our local funds are covering any stipends and extra time. We're coding those things to the local fund. And here you'll see, um, you know, this is our first month, we're really doing this in the system. So we're pulling out these. Um, expenditures by the funds, and that will change over time. Uh, at the end of the year, we'll be doing a reconciliation to make sure that um. The what we receive from federal and state revenues matches the expenditures.
Jenna, can you please, in the general fund, the state's definition of sub-fund ten and sub-fund eleven, please?
So the sub-fund ten is any revenues we receive from the state federal government, um, any other. Kind of miscellaneous dollars, and then fund eleven is really local. Um, the majority of those local funds are going to be our levy. Um, their enrichment levy, but also any uh local donations and grants or any fees received from students um or families.
And I will, I would like to commend Jenna and staff because this is a required reporting component, which is extremely complex in our current fiscal system. They've done a tremendous job in figuring out how to parse out all of this. Um, and to ensure that we're going to be in compliance. Of course, like I mentioned before, this is subject to audit. Which I think we're going to find interesting this year in their interpretation of how we're doing this. Um, they did check with us last year on what methodology we had in place and seemed to be fine with it. Uh, but this will be an evolving report. If you'd like to see it in some other format, or if you'd like to see additional information. Or explanation, you know, please let let me know so that we can include that for you.
So I I think my request, and I'll kind of uh go back to my question earlier. Um, I definitely want to get this. I'm not saying I don't want this, but um I have a concern that we will. Uh, and let me just say, I very much agree with spend the state and federal first and and levy last. So I um, I think that's a very uh smart decision. My concern is we won't get that final uh dollar amount of how much of our levy we had to spend on basic education. Until next October, and at that point, we're very well into, if not done with the conversation. So. For us and for our community, is there a way we can get a year projection? Um. Chart uh of what we're anticipating, we're going to have to use our levy dollars for so that we can. Get that conversation, and I don't mean like next week. Um, but in the spring, when we're doing this conversation, a way of having that chart of here is. Um, you know, the piece of the pie that is levy dollars and what it's spent on.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Actually, if I could ask two, please, and this is probably just me not being terribly familiar with how this is being reported, but. On this, um, in this table, we do have funds. Under sub-fund ten, if I'm reading it correctly, the state and federal, and we have local dollars being spent um on basic education. Um, special education and so forth. Um, can you eh explain to me how that? How that works with respect to spending the state and federal first, or is it just a matter of? This was the amount of state and federal that we had for this this month, and so the local dollars kicked in is?
We have a whole um, a list of rules kind of that we're following. Um, there are certain programs that are going to be all federal. Funds, so we know that all of the expenditures in there would be federal. Um. And we know some programs are going to be all um locally funded. The summer school program there, seventy-three, that is all going to be in the sub-fund eleven because. All of those revenues that we bring in and all of that that we spend is going to be local funds. So there are some of those cases. Um, and then, like I said before, we're spending, we're using our local funds for any stipends or any overtime. So we're saying that those are automatically going to be considered to be local funds. Um, another piece of that is we have some some revenues we receive from the state for professional development. But the district is also covering some of those too. So you'll see expenditures at both.
Okay, thank you.
Be helpful in the future, or maybe enough, you know, and communication from the superintendent to we. Jenna's created a PowerPoint that she's going to be using for training staff that you might find informational. Um, that would help explain the methodology and really identify the particular object codes or activities that we are coding. To either the general fund or the local fund piece. Um, and I know that I I attended her training today and I found it um to be very helpful for me in understanding, you know, how we're moving forward. So. Um, I think we can provide that for you.
That would be great, Tracy.
Yes, thank you.
I think what we want to do, and I think what Director Hayes is referring to, is what we want to prevent is sort of moving down month to month and people not necessarily watching. The meeting, but just looking at the documents, and then all of a sudden, there's this huge assignment of fund. Um, and it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense, right? So we we need to tell that story in writing as well as conversation in some way that our community understands it, I think.
Uh, it would be helpful if if we create um an additional graphic to to accompany this, to show the projected. And just keep, you know, communicating our methodology and how we're accounting for this. And so then we can see how it lines up as we move uh further through the year.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Good. Thank you. Other than that, the September report is very similar to August. We explained, we did, there was a question on the on the federal general purpose, and that really has to do with the um, the revenue accruals. And so. Um, you will see in October that will be reversed um and taken care of. It's not an error, really. We consider our revenue accruals really their liability of the district. I mean, we can't account for revenues twice, so it makes sense. Um, it's just a timing issue on this, this particular period of time. And uh, if you want to scroll down, Mike, like I said, the rest of it is just similar. So we have our budget status reports for all major five funds. And then it's finished, we can have the capital projects report, and then we have our staffing. Any questions? Further questions you should ask? Okay, I know I'm keeping in my our eye on time here. So just very quickly, I'd like to share regional enrollment information, just very quickly that I put together. And then I'm going to pass it off to Joe and back to Mike. So Mike, if you could pull up the enrollment data. Thank you. So I put together um just two comparisons um in context. Uh, details per district do not include running start or dropout re-engagement enrollment data. So I compared about thirteen other districts just using information I found on the O S P I website. So this particular report reflects budgeted F T E by district, actual F T E reported through November, and then the net variance from budget on a monthly basis and the net. Annual average F T E variance by budget. And I know I probably should have highlighted North Shore, but we're on uh row thirteen, and you can see. Um, that we're sitting in a pretty fair position as compared to our regional districts, which is encouraging. And the next report reflects monthly comparison by district, um strictly September through November um last year as compared to this year. Mike, if you can pull that back up again.
Okay.
Hold on that same page. Thank you. Just scroll down.
Yeah, uh, there we go. I'm trying to get it to cooperate with me. Thank you.
Nineteen twenty to twenty-one, and then what the difference in an annual average F T E. And again, you can see North Shore, and we're, you know, we're sitting in a fairly good position as compared to. So I just wanted to share that briefly with you. And from there, I'd like to ask Joe Paperman if he'd like to comment on capital projects reporting, if there's any updates or changes that you plan to make.
It's so probably the largest change we're we're planning on making is going forward, uh, future budgeting for the capital projects. We started a. Capital projects master planner, excuse me, facilities master planning process this year to try and do an assessment for the next twenty years. Um, much like our budgeting process, that sort of fell short when we had lots of plans for inclusive. Um, bringing in people to assess conditions as well as instructional adequacy adequacy at our buildings. Unfortunately, when COVID hit, we couldn't bring in lots of people to the building. So we had a fairly small team, went around and did condition assessments. Um, as well as looking instructional adequacy at at the buildings. Um, so the plan would be going forward, having that plan should be coming out in in. Next couple of months, and we'll be bringing that to the board with the twenty-year plan of of facilities. Um, and then we would use that to start the discussion with the capital bond planning for the twenty twenty-two capital bond. Um. Yeah, the budgeting for this year was pretty straightforward for capital projects. I could actually. Um, I know, Siobhan, if I can share, maybe bring up the the uh G F O A budgeting document, if I can share. The the budgeting for the capital projects um was pretty straightforward. Um, unlike the last two years, we didn't have a capital bond issuance. So we pretty much are looking in twenty twenty-one. Of having a spend down on our our previous bond issuance. Um, the only major revenues we'd have coming in are the fifteen million dollars of the tax of the uh. Technology levy, um, and then about six million dollars in impact fees. But better than that, we've already got most of the money, the two hundred seventy-five million in from the twenty eighteen bond, and we won't have a large. Um, influx of revenue until twenty twenty-two, when we do do our next bond. Um. We tried to be pretty aggressive this year, and I think in in most of our years on the capital bond, just like building in capacity in the general fund. We tend to try and estimate what's the most we think we could ever spend, knowing that there'll be projects that just time-wise, we don't have the ability to do. But just in case we have perfect weather and everything goes great, um, what could we potentially get through? Knowing that we'll fall short of that. So we had a big spend forecasted for twenty twenty-one. We know some of those projects will get moved into twenty-one, twenty-two, and even twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, but we at least want to have that capacity uh to do it. Um, similar, probably, probably the weirder looking one um. On the on the budgeting side for our group was the uh transportation vehicle fund. And we sort of learned from our history. And we sort of learned from our history that we know we've got a couple of things going on. We've been trying to get large revenues from grants for energy efficient vehicles, lower emissions vehicles. And you can see in our budget for nineteen twenty, we had the two hundred eighty thousand dollars for the propane buses that we ended up purchasing. And then in twenty twenty-one, we budgeted a million dollars for our electric vehicles for the grant we're going to get for the three electric buses that we're purchasing. We sort of went really high on the budgeted expenditures, pulling the, the fund balance pretty close to zero. Just that we, we've learned from history that we always think we're going to get the buses in July and August, and we'll pay for them in August. And then what happens, they don't get delivered to September, and then we get billed, and then that reduces our capacity the next year. So when we were budgeting for twenty twenty-one, we assumed that none of the electric buses would show up on time. None of the other buses would show up on time, that we'd have to pay for all of them in twenty twenty-one. And then also with start time changes, we're anticipating having to add additional buses. So we pretty much planned on nothing arriving by a year end. So we have all the expenditures for the previous purchases, plus buying as many buses as we potentially could for start time, just to give us that capacity. So we didn't have a, a late bus arriving. And sure enough, the last of the electric buses arrived just a couple of weeks ago. So, so we're sort of fortunate that we did plan that way so that we have the capacity to buy those three electric buses as well as buying whatever buses we need for the, the start time changes that we're anticipating making. So that'll turn it back over to Mike and Tracy, unless there's questions on.
Thank you, Joe. Mike, do you, would you like to share your G F O A budget document briefly?
I'd be glad to. I'll defer to the folks in the meeting. I think you've had the benefit of seeing this in your packets. One of the things we discussed as a team is how the broader equity conversation is really deeply related to the resource allocation as well. So we brought that out on the cover. But other than that, the approach and format similar to last year. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. And, and whether here or if you have questions, feel free to let us know later, and we'd be glad to talk about them as well.
No, just, I don't have any questions. Thanks for answering my questions, guys, as, as we were going. So I, I, my list is all checked off luckily, but really enjoy this work. This is the G F O A. It's there. We were all at the WASDA Annual Conference last week, and there was a lot of talk. I attended a couple of sessions in terms of one called Vision to Align Budgeting, right? And so what you all are doing is what the rest of the school boards are asking for. And so it was, I, I didn't gloat, but in my heart, I did. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a question. When do you think timeline-wise, this document, we'll see it the next version?
Well, my hope is that life will return to normal. If, in my perfect world, we'll have those conversations with district leadership, we'll be able to present a budget to Dr. Reed for her consideration in time for us to produce a work product like this for your deliberations in June. And the, the logic behind all of that is that you have that data that is represented in a document of this nature to consider as you deliberate over the best way to allocate district resources. And so logically, the timing for something of this, you know, work of this nature would be before the decision instead of after, right? And, and help inform the decision. So that's our goal. And, and we certainly aspire to that this spring.
Thank you so much.
The only other document we have to share is the budget document. I think you've had that in your packets. Would you like us to go through that with you? Are you okay with where, with what we presented? All right. I was just considering, and, uh, as, as our timeline goes, I think we had until six forty-five. So I just wanted to consider your time, so. And that would conclude our presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, everybody, for wonderful, thorough presentations always. I'm sure we'll have plenty of emails to send to Dr. Reed after we move on with all the questions we didn't think of. So be prepared. Any other questions before turning it over to Dr. Reed here for a minute?
Um, not so much questions, except that I want to attend all of those trainings that were mentioned. And I'm sure, I'm not alone, but both the G F O A and, and I'm going to call them the McCleary training sessions that Jenna is putting together. But I just, I want to thank you for this work. I mean, to be fiscally prudent in all that has happened in the last nine months would, would have been one thing. But to keep the money to the mission focus, in addition, is just, it's, it's phenomenal. And Director Cast referenced this conference that we were at all last week. We are now known as the Marcia of school districts, and I think today's session definitely shows why.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Reed, do you have any closing remarks?
No, just really proud of our budget team and our principals, our teachers, support staff. Everyone's very cognizant of the looming budget challenges. And we've really taken to heart the idea of repurposing and renewing and recycling. And it's really a team effort district-wide. So I just really grateful, thanks for the entire team. And I want to thank Tracy and her team this evening. It's good work.
All right. Um, I guess that's it. Well, thank you all so much. I will call this meeting adjourned or study session, and we'll see everyone back online at seven o'clock for